America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Dear God, we give you thanks and praise for this day. Ask you to be with us to help us be and be good stewards of the funds that have been allocated to us, give us wisdom and judgment and discernment. We also ask for rain on our community and if it be your will, seasonable or other, that the earth may be charged with releasing its malty. Be with us today that our words and actions be clear, true, and pleasing to you. In your son's name we pray.
Amen.
The chair comments this morning is to announce that a gentleman by the name of Terry Campbell was elected to the Supreme Court Nominating Commission as its chair. That commission will convene shortly to nominate to the governor three persons of merit for selection to the Kansas Supreme Court upon the retirement of Justice Evelyn Wilson. Mr. Campbell won that vote by nearly eighty percent of the vote, demonstrating his leadership for the Supreme Court Nominating Commission. We urge Terry well in his tenure in that important work. The other comment that I have this morning is, is that we are looking forward to a, an election in November on a half-cent sales tax for Fannie County for the improvements of building a new jail, remodeling and improving the law enforcement center. We hope to have information to the public about the need and necessity and parameters of the expected construction as soon as possible. Stay tuned. With that, we have a consent agenda. Madam Vice Chair.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Well, actually, we have a couple of additions to that. Not to the consent?
Not to consent. We'll get to it when we get to the business items.
Okay. Then I move to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. This morning, we have two persons who have spoke to the clerk for purposes of addressing the commission. We'll take them in reverse order. Mr. Steve Sterling.
I'd just like to say.
Please announce.
I'm sorry.
Who you are, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Steve Sterling. Been a resident of Fannie County all my entire life, and I'm here to talk about Jenny Barker Road and the hazard it is and has been. I've approached the county on this several times, nobody listened. Finally, I had a gentleman drive out through there, Kevin Basque, and he's going to know what I'm talking about. But do look at those pictures, because I'm sitting here and going to tell you all right now, if somebody doesn't die on that road, it's going to be a miracle. Nobody is driven, and I don't need smiles out there. This is the serious truth. I am serious about this. I've drove more dirt roads than probably anybody in this county. Very few have outdone me. I grew up on them, been on them all my life. I took a half-ton pickup, my daughter's pickup, the other day, just, just to drive down it and see, and at fifty mile an hour, I was going thirty degrees either way. Any faster, it would have rolled. I know it would have. You take a fifteen or sixty, you can tell I'm a little wound up about this, because this is a serious issue, and I don't think anybody understands. I don't even know if anybody drives county roads. Thank goodness Kevin did. But the, the road grader could go over it, and within three days, it's right back to where it was. Now, there was something done in that, we're thinking, my son and I are thinking, in 2012 or 2013. I don't know if it was an ash they put on it or what. It was cool. They put a new top on it. It was, it was like a highway, but the graders got into it. And if you look at those pictures, you'll see, you will never fix those holes. That's going to have to be totally redone, paved or something. But I've had enough. I've got a daughter, I drive on it, my guys drive on it. We can't even drive our semis down the road. We have to go down Weeby Road and then get on the highway to go around. Nobody can drive semis down that road, and I know somebody's going to get hurt on that really bad. And, and since it's known now, then something has got to be done about that. I am so passionate about this. I guarantee you, somebody's going to be either badly injured or is going to die on that road. You take a sixteen-year-old kid, I was that once, I'm getting old enough, it's hard to remember a little bit, but they don't slow down. They don't realize what, what could happen. And anything lighter than a three-quarter ton pickup, and it is bad. And anyway, I just had to bring that forward, because, you know, I don't care about any more of the ball diamonds, I don't care about anything in this county. We have to take care of infrastructure before somebody gets hurt. And, I mean, this is serious. Kevin drove it after the road grader, and he called me up, said, I'm never saying so bad. You ought to, I mean, it'll look like that every week. There's actually holes in the ground, and that's all the way out to that housing development. You know, I don't know what you're going to do. It probably ought to be paved, but, you know, whatever. There's a lot of people lived out there, a lot of kids live out there, and those holes are all the way to that part. Now, after that, it's a normal county road. We get rain, we get holes in it. That's just life. But this is terrible, and it's from Jenny Barker Road and Sixth Mile Road all the way to that housing development is where the worst of the worst is, where somebody's going to get hurt. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that forward, because if that happens, and this doesn't get fixed, then I think the county ought to be held responsible. I really do. I pay a lot of taxes, a lot of people live out there, we own the ground out there, we pay a lot of taxes, and nothing's getting done. I know road graders run once a month compared to almost all the time. I don't know what the issue is there, if it's pay or, or what, but, you know, these taxes need to go to taking care of our county, and that's really all I've got. If anybody has any questions, I'm willing to answer one, but I hope you understand how serious this is, because it takes a lot for me to come and take time to come in to see you all, but this is serious. And I have grandkids going to be driving on it. Everybody has kids, grandkids, but even adults, they don't know how to drive on things like that. Kevin knows that, and somebody's going to get killed out there.
Thank you for the public comment. We'll refer the matter to the administrator in the Road and Bridge Department.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next up, we'll hear from Lance Rupp. All right, very good, then you don't need to be. I thought you were here to address this, sir.
I'm here for the public hearing.
All right, very good. Now, any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to the business items, and Madam Vice Chair, now is a good time for a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay, I would make a motion to amend the agenda, adding an item for Compass Behavioral Health, ESG approval, City of Garden City, and I think we wanted to address that one first, perhaps, and then the City of Garden City Northeast Bypass Study Request, and we need to add an additional executive session to the end.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second to amend the agenda. We'll take up Compass first, the city second, and the executive session where indicated. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Amended, agenda is amended accordingly. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Thus, we will hear this morning from Compass Behavioral Health. They have two persons here, Glenda Griffin and Rich Humphrey. Please come on up and make your presentation for the approval of ESG reports.
So, on the ESG, like, it's basically to help the homeless population, help pay for rent and deposits, including utilities and utility deposits.
Okay, does commissioners have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I could offer that we have done this for the last many years, and I believe this is a grant that is normally provided to counties in this space. We, this is basically giving the authorization for Compass to administer that grant.
So, the action is, is to authorize Compass to proceed with the grant?
I believe to authorize you to sign the certification of local government approval.
Anybody have any other questions for Compass? All right. Certification of local government approval for nonprofit organizations receiving a 2025 Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, is the known claim, authorizing the chairman to sign. Is there such a motion?
I'll make such a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who got the second, Madam Vice Chair? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, I'll sign.
Glenda, I hope your husband's doing better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Matt Allen, the city administrator.
Good morning, commissioners. Gary Meeger, interim county administrator. I want to recognize Matt Allen, C manager for Garden City, is here today, in case there is any questions. What this has to do with is the, back on April twenty-eighth of this, of this year, the City of Garden City Commissioners, Fannie County Board of County Commission, and the Holcomb City Council met in a joint meeting, and at the joint meeting, the governing bodies reviewed a, a presentation concerning the 2005 U.S. 400 Corridor Concept Report, and specifically, the report's anticipated design of the northeast bypass west of Garden City Regional Airport to, to the U.S. West on the north side of Garden City. At the meeting, the county commission, or the city commission and county commission agreed to further pursue advocating for KDOT to advance this project to be included in the, in the agency's pipeline of capital projects. Subsequently, the city and county representatives met with KDOT officials to discuss a logical step in the desired direction. The group came up with a consensus that the next KDOT action would be an update or revaluation of the expansion of, of the 2005 U.S. 400 Corridor Concept Report for the remaining unimproved section of the, of, of the report in Fannie County. The group consensus was also that the, the City of Garden City and city, Board of County Commissioners would initiate this request by submitting a letter to KDOT requesting the same and indicating some level of local cost share for the project. There was a letter, I think you have a letter that was, goes along with this request, that was prepared, reviewed by the city and county staff. Both Matt Allen and myself looked at that and provided a joint communication on that particular letter to help KDOT evaluate and expand that corridor report, and the, the letter also indicates that the city and county should work together by contributing together, not in, not separately, but together a hundred thousand dollars towards this project, and that would be the local share that would be offered for this particular project. And that money would then come out of the, or what we're recommending, come out of the Economic Development Incentive Fund. The county has that fund in our chart of accounts, but that money is, is money that's been put in there by both the city and the county. So, it's, it was designed for this kind of a use. So, the governing body is, or the, the governing body today is being asked to consider and approve allowing the chairman to sign a joint letter to support the Fannie County, or with, to support this request with the City of Garden City, to the Department of Transportation, requesting the update and evaluate and reevaluate the, and expand the 2005 U.S. 400 Corridor Request. And so, the alternatives you have today would be that the governing body may approve allowing the chairman to sign the joint letter with the mayor of Garden City to the Department of Transportation, requesting the agency update, reevaluate, and/or expand the 2005 U.S. Corridor Concept Report as it pertains to the portion of the U.S. 400 Corridor west of Garden City Regional Airport and interacting with the U.S. 50 West, U.S. 83 North, and local street network. Or the governing body may not approve allowing the chairman to sign the letter. This is something that we did talk about at the, at our work joint meeting, our last joint meeting, and the recommendation is that, that you go forward with allowing the chairman to sign the joint letter, so that we can expand the study, update the study, and, you know, provide better access in that particular area.
Does this request also need to have the amount that we're taking out of the Economic Fund?
You, you, I, I would say that you would authorize, that you, you would okay it, the city will okay it also, so that you're both in agreement that the money would be a hundred thousand dollars total and be taken out of that fund.
I think we can do it all in one motion, or do you think we have to have two separate?
I think you could do it one motion, Commissioner.
Very good. Other questions?
I was wondering if Matt has anything to add? Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve alternative one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we sign the proposed letter, and also to authorize, should the city also agree, to pay for the cost of the inquiry and the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from the Economic Incentive Fund. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, I think we're back to our agenda, so we'll hear from the fire department.
I'm Lieutenant Cooper Wilson with the Garden City Fire Department. I am also acting currently as the interim training chief. I'm here to give you the April summary. Our call volume was down a bit, you know, when we had the blizzard and the, the two wind and dust storms in, in March, that kind of accounted for a high volume of calls compared to April. Other than that, we still stayed pretty busy. We had an eventful month. We had our recruit, recruit academy, that was three weeks from around April seventh to the twenty-fifth. We had our RFLIVE burn, which is our, our aircraft rescue and firefighting that we do every year out at the Three Eye Lot, as well as, we had a few of our members go to Swift Water Training in Oklahoma, and our tactical rescue team also collaborated with Dodge and Liberal with the multi-agency training. We also had quite a few of our Stop the Bleed and CPR classes that we give to the citizens. Other than that, it's just a ton of workout at Station Three as we're trying to close that up. I think that's about all I got for you.
All right, Cooper, Mr. Wilson, thank you for your report. We do have one question, and maybe she's been asking John, but what's the timeline, and when do you think Fire Station Three is going to be open?
We just did the punch list last week. I think they were shooting for the first of, part of June, the first week or so. I would say my best guess right now is we're probably looking for at least a few weeks after that.
All right, very good. Keep up all the hard work. That's an exciting addition to Garden City.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the fire report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Roxanne Landsync regarding the fair board.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for letting me defer to this week for our budget hearings. As you know, the Fannie County Fair has expanded over the last couple of years. We've added kickoff concert that's been well-received. We also, last year, added the rodeo, and then this year, we are partnering with Tumbleweed, where we will have a tumbleweed evening for them to highlight some of their artists. And as always, we have great livestock and static participation from those four H'ers. Fannie County Fair Board is a working board, and so, while I have your, the opportunity, I want to make sure that, you know, that these people are all giving up valuable volunteer hours, and it's not your normal volunteer hours, it's not one or two here. These people give up usually anywhere from a week to two weeks of vacation time to spend out there at the fairgrounds, getting ready and to work the fair. So, you will note on the budget that I did ask for an increase, and basically, that is, insurance alone is costing us twice as much than it used to be. So, in my knowledge of my eighteen years, I don't think the fair boards ever ask for an increase. I understand that tax dollars are tight, but I do think that the value is there, and we're not asking outside of what we absolutely need. And at that, I would stand for any questions.
Questions with regard to fair board outside agency budget request?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I have a statement. I'm, I'm on the fair board, and I can attest to visually observing how hard that, that working board, volunteer working board does work, and all of the extra volunteer time that they put in, so much so that they have caused me to rethink funding and how the fair board and the fairgrounds is used and all of that kind of stuff. And so, perhaps, when we address the fairgrounds, the fairgrounds budget, maybe that might be a good time to discuss some, some thoughts and some ideas at that time, so. But I do very much appreciate the hard work. I've been on boards like what they're on, and it drains you very much, and, and I'm impressed that the folks have stayed as long as they have and worked as hard as they have for.
Right, we have some members that have been there twenty-plus years. They are dedicated individuals.
Any other questions? Need a motion to take the budget, excuse me?
Roxanne, I know West Plains District in Scott City, the extension does more of the managing the, I would say, the livestock and the four H' portion of the fair than the fair board.
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any thoughts of letting them do that in Fannie County, too?
We've had a lot of conversations.
Those type of things?
Right, we've had a lot of conversations, and I think you see it moving more in that direction. It is still a fair event, so it's where those lines are drawn, and that we're trying to figure that out currently, so.
Well, I'm glad you're list, looking at it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? If not, we need a motion to take the budget requests for an outside agency under advisement.
I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded to take the fair board's outside agency requests under advisement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you, Roxanne. Don't go very far. Next on the business agenda is the outside agency request of CVB.
I've given you an economic impact study from 2023, and we'll get into that in just a second. For those commissioners that are new, I just wanted to speak to how we were funded. The Fannie County Convention and Visitors Bureau is funded a hundred percent from the guest tax, the transient tax. That is a six percent tax on every room for someone who stays in Fannie County less than twenty, twenty-eight days or less. So, just, we are a hundred percent funded by that tax with it, and all of that goes to us, with the exception of the deferment for the of the deferment for the water park. And now getting into the 2023 tourism economic impact, and I'm sorry, you're probably wondering why it's 2023 and not 24. This is a third-party company that the state uses, and so we utilize them as well. And yes, it does look like we're two years behind, but we're not. They're currently working on our 2024 numbers because they use all of the sales tax dollars and that kind of stuff that is turned into the state to utilize those reports. So currently now, they're working on my 2024. So yes, we do get those very much in arrears, and my apologies for that, but it does give us really good trends. If you look at that, and please look at this at your leisure, the brief synopsis of that is the economic impact of tourism in Fannie County is $143 million. That equates to 1,679 jobs. 13.9 million dollars of that is state and local taxes. Also, if you look at the increase, 2019, we kind of take out that 20, oh my goodness, that 2020 year, simply because we know that that year kind of threw us all for a loop. So we compare to 2019, the last normal year we had, and so we have grown exponentially. That year was 122 million in economic impact. As we look at 2023, you'll see that growth of over $20 million to 142.5. So we've always seen consistent and steady growth through, with the exception of 2020, through the years. It is slow and steady growth, and I think that that's the most preferable. This is the most uncomfortable mic ever. I apologize. So there are three different ways that the economic impact is measured, and that's direct impact, that's visitor spending, the actual visitor coming in and spending at the retailers, the food, the lodging, and business-to-business services, I mean, in transportation. Then there's that indirect, that is the purchase of inputs by tourism businesses, supply chains and business-to-business. And then you have that induced impact. That induced impact is salaries. Basically, that's the consumer spending out of employee wages. So we know that that dollar, even though that they're putting 142 million, is probably circulated three to four times in our community. So the usefulness of that is, is exponential. Page 15 shows the industry by amount of employment. If you look, you can see that tourism jobs rank fifth in the community. However, I would, I would like to add accommodations and food services because in my mind, that's a leisure and hospitality business as all, and as well. If you look at that and you add those two numbers together, that's 33, 33, 44 jobs, and that makes it number two in the county as far as economic impact for jobs. So local employees are supported, local employees supported by leisure and hospitality spending in wages totaled almost 36 million, and that's just on the, on the tourism side. So that's one in 12 jobs in the county. So obviously, what we do is very important and means a lot. And in our office, we recently just finished up with NJCAA Division One Women's National Golf Tournament. Also, we are currently in the process of bidding for the Men's National Tournament for '27 and '28. We also just finished up with Kansas Collegiate Athletic Conference Championship, and now we're moving into B-Fam Party. So expect to see everybody out there. There'll be great concerts then, too. We did lease a new production printer. The product that you see in front of you is one of the things that we print on that. The value we see in having our own in-house production printer is, first of all, the relevance of all of our print materials. We can print our print materials on the fly. So if a business closes, a restaurant closes, something changes, an event date changes, we have the ability to change that on the fly and reprint those products. It also saves us in a ton of shipping. When we originally moved into looking at a production printer, it was to save on the cost of print. That is not the case next, right now with supply chain issues we're having, to spend a little more on paper, but we still are saving, and like I said, the utilization of that product to be able to have a product that's not, I don't have to wait six months to reprint. So that's exciting in and of itself, so there's a lot less waste on that side of it. Also, in the marketing side of it, Melissa's our new assistant director and has taken over the marketing area, and she has done an amazing job with our social media. As I'm sure many of you have seen, she implemented some new products. We are still very much involved in insertion ads and digital and social media. I can't even begin to tell you all the places Melissa is working on marketing. So I would stand for any questions?
Okay, for now, we're going to take a break from your application, and we'll have you back up for questions. We have a nine o'clock hearing we need to attend to.
Absolutely.
We'll be right back to you. On the agenda, we published that we would hold a hearing at nine o'clock for the public consideration of the determination of the immediate urban growth area. We'll first hear from Kara Schartz, and then we'll open it up for a public hearing at that time.
On November the 5th of 2024, an interlocal cooperative agreement was fully executed between the City of Garden City and Fannie County outlining the services provided by the City of Garden City for development within the unincorporated areas of Fannie County, including creation of an immediate urban growth area. The immediate urban growth area is an area within the unincorporated area of Fannie County that is immediately adjacent to the corporate limits of Garden City that has been identified by the City of Garden City for possible development or redevelopment in the near future based upon growth and development trends. Per the interlocal cooperative agreement, the Board of County Commissioners is to adopt a resolution establishing the immediate growth area and incorporate by reference the Garden City Building Codes, Development and Design Standards, Subdivision Regulations, and Zoning Regulations for the immediate urban growth area. Kansas statute 12-3303 requires the county to set and hold the public hearing before adopting the resolution to adopt new codes. Date, time, and required information in accordance with state statute was published prior to public hearing that was set for today. Recommendations would be to open the public hearing, hear any public comment, and close the public hearing.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on the adoption of the immediate urban growth area and the adoption by reference to the Garden City Building Codes, Development and Design Standards, Subdivision Regulations, and Zoning Regulations as required by the agreement signed by the Commission on November of 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to conduct a public hearing on the issues just identified. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in a public hearing. We will hear from anybody who has a desire to address the Commission on the singular issue of adopting the Garden City Building Codes, Development Design Standards, Subdivision Regulations, and Zoning Regulations for designation in the immediate urban growth area according to the agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tim Hannigan. I'm a local developer that's done projects both with the city and with the county over the last few years, so I have planning experience with both the city and with the county. My largest development project is the Western Kansas Corridor, which is at the corner of 1583, up next to the travel center there. That project is in its sixth year, and my experiences with that project prompt my opposition, my, my desire to voice my opposition to the agreement that you're considering now. Don't get me wrong, my experience with the city has been pretty favorable. Expansion of the urban growth area and adoption of their codes is, I think, a step in the right direction. My trouble is that my experience in general with the county's planning creates doubt in my mind about whether or not there's been enough consideration given to the long-term strategic plan for how you handle development services. This is my third time here over the last six years. There's a lot of new faces, but as a recap of the lowlights of my last six years, your planning services for the county delayed my project for over a year at the beginning. Landholding interest expense for that year, $78,000. Lost opportunity because of that delay, many multiples of that $78,000, but a number I can't even really objectively give you. The, during the process of doing my development, I was physically threatened by one of your county employees, as witnessed by other public employees. I was, my question, my integrity and my reputation was questioned as documented by the Garden City Telegram. When I completed my project, you had a six-month administrative and legal delay before you accepted my project, which resulted in a delay on the occupancy permit for my first client and lost revenue for my first client. I had a letter of intent for a large piece of land. That client moved across the highway and purchased land that was cheaper. Why was it cheaper? Because the county made an ad hoc decision to grant a building permit and an occupancy permit for that client without improvements of the road. They were not held to the same standards that I was held to for the infrastructure. Second client went across the highway following the first client expecting the same treatment. My remedy for those problems, although I had multiple remedies, my remedy has been to come here and try to speak respectfully and calmly, try to be a part of the solution by clearly stating the problem, and then optimistically looking for an improvement in your services. Last week, six years after I announced my project, after adding multiple end users to the Northwest Industrial District, you finally called a meeting of the stakeholders to determine the usage rates and how you're going to pay for the maintenance for the users in the Northwest Industrial. This was last week. No one on my side of the highway, I don't believe, was invited to that meeting, and I certainly know I wasn't invited to that meeting. I'm the largest landholder in that district. I have the most votes in the district. You didn't even invite me to the meeting. I didn't even know about it until a couple of days ahead of time. My experience with the county is chaos, dysfunction, unreturned telephone calls, unanswered emails, personal attacks, ad hoc decisions, lack of accountability. And those employees within the county conduct themselves that way because there hasn't been accountability from your county administrator, and the county administrator has not been held accountable by the county commissioners. You now are in a position where you have multiple new faces here. You have an interim county administrator. This decision, in my opinion, is also reactive and ad hoc. You've not done the strategic planning that you really need to conduct yourselves and make decisions about the best way forward for planning. You've not included what will eventually be your new county administrator. What is his vision or her vision going to be for how this should go forward? You're making this decision at absolutely the wrong time, again, in an ad hoc fashion, and you, in my opinion, haven't solved the culture of accountability that you need to solve as Commissioners. And adding another planning department or more employees to the county is redundant. It's additional taxpayer expense without proper planning. And it still hasn't acknowledged your ultimate responsibility to hold yourselves and your employees accountable for what's been going on. Again, I welcome the idea that the city would have more area to be responsible for. Not disagreeing with that part of it. I'm simply asking you to just for a moment, stop your reactive approach to this and pause, include a new county administrator, and ask yourself, based on what's been happening, how can we be better? And include that person in those discussions. And then go back and hopefully solve some of the issues that I've been dealing with, and I'm not the only one. I appreciate your time. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Commission?
Morning. I'm Lance Rupp, Southwest Kansas Builders Association Board Member, also a contractor, and I have concerns with this agreement with NDS. I'm asking you to reconsider. I'm basing that on the history of the county accomplishing anything in a timely manner. I mean, you've been working on the sewer district for over two, two years, you, the HVAC problem for five years, this agreement for over two years, and I just think the city does a better job. I, as a member of the Builders Association, I've talked to at least a dozen builders and developers, and now one of them thinks this is a good idea. So I'm just asking you to reconsider. I think that a lot of these problems happened during the previous administration, and I'm glad that era has passed us. And if Gary would have been involved in this situation, this agreement from the start, I would, I would consider it. But he's interim, so he's going to be leaving, and who knows what the next administrator will do. So just a couple more comments. Thank you for your time, and have a good day.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to commit, address the Commission with regard to the singular issue of complying with the November 2024 agreement?
Good morning. Gina Ann Liker, broker and owner of Coldwell Banker, a part of the Garden City Border Realtors. My largest concern once again is property taxes. We're starting a new, new organization, you know, we'd have to have complete new program, new offices, expenses. Here in the last six, eight months, the number of people that are backing in a corner because they can't afford property taxes and insurance, we're wanting to build our community and housing for our locals, but the costs are getting unbelievable. People are having to sell their houses, if they can get them sold right now, and it's been... and it's backing them in the corner. I'm going to be back here just pushing for, we've got to keep these taxes down. All we're doing right now is adding bureaucracy, as well as property taxes, to pay for this stuff. So I think we need to consolidate, keep things local, keep them easy, so we can include and build, make growth easier, as well as building and providing economic housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the commission on the single issue of adoption of the November 2024 agreement requirements? If not, then we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to close?
So moved.
A second, a second, to close the public hearing on the proposal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We're back in regular session. The adoption to establish the urban growth area within the agreement that's been signed and was sent in your packets. The chair wishes to point out some very important matters with regard to this agreement. One is, is that the city negotiated this agreement in good faith, that it's our responsibility to comply with the agreement. I have no intention of breaching an agreement with the city. There are times for this agreement that can be renegotiated. Today's not the day to do a renegotiation. It's our job to live with our agreement. The urban, immediate urban growth area provides the same contractors that were here with one playbook for the purposes of completing construction projects within the urban growth area. That was perceived and designed to be the impetus for the negotiated agreement with both commissions approving that in November of 2024. We are not perfect, nor was the prior administration, nor our present employees. We don't claim to be perfect. Government, however, has a responsibility not to breach contracts, especially those with its partners in government, with the city. From the chair's perspective, the quote duplication of services is minimal when compared with the prospect of persons who are outside the urban growth area being required to build structures according to the city's code. The purpose of the agreement was to protect our farmers and ranchers, those persons that live outside of that area, from being subject to the incredible costs of compliance with the city code in the county. Prior commissioners were very concerned about the restrictions on the use of their land outside of the immediate area. The compromise in the urban growth area, and as now identified in the agreement, is one that hasn't changed. And it's one that needs to be carefully reviewed by the, by this commission. And I would urge this commission to comply with the agreement that it made in November of 2024. That does not mean that we cannot improve on this agreement and continue to make changes and improvements in the efficiency of government. We can. Those are my remarks. Commissioners?
Well, we've worked on this project for a long time, and lots of legal arguments on both sides. I hate to, you know, wait just because we're in the process of hiring a new city, I mean county manager to postpone this whole process for them to take a look at it, or whoever it is, take a look at it and make changes. I think you spoke about it, being able to be able to adapt it and change it. I think that's the whole secret to this thing is future commissions will be able to change it if they don't like the way things are going. And that's the problem we didn't do in the past. We didn't change it quick enough.
I would look at paragraph nineteen of it, and it can be terminated, it can be modified, it can be all of those things. But I, I'm not in the habit of breaching agreements that were negotiated in good faith to have a stated public purpose.
I guess, again, I think everybody here knows my feelings on this. I've not thought this was a good idea from the beginning. I've not, that hasn't been a secret. I feel like there is a better option. And perhaps, you know, with, with different people in the room, maybe we could come to a different agreement. Maybe we could modify this agreement to make it something that's better. I know that what Lance said is true. I've talked to multiple members of the Builders Association, and they feel like they want to go to one entity. You've, you've talked a lot about this being one-stop shopping. When it was presented at the Builders Association, it was not one-stop shopping. It was, you got to go here for this, and you got to go over there for that. And depending on where it is, you might have to go here, or you have to go there, and you contact this person or that person. To me, it was unclear where to go for what, and I'm pretty familiar with the agreement. Also, I, I feel like it's a duplication of services, and I think we could save the taxpayers some money by having that all be done in one location. Those are my thoughts.
Commissioners?
I have to concur with both you, Jerry and Vicky. Jerry, Jerry, on your aspect, I hate breaking agreements and contracts. But I was also at that Home Builders meeting with Vicky, and my eyes went from one screen to the next screen on where you're supposed to go. I have heard of complaints on our, on what we do in the county. We can do better. We have a interim county administrator. We have a city manager that's been with the city for, I forget how long, Matt, a long time. And I'm a firm believer of building bridges, not tearing bridges down. We have, I've, I've thought about this all weekend, and, and I, I just, we're spending additional tax dollars for duplicate services, and there may have been issues or problems. But I don't see why county administrator, whether the interim or the next county administrator, and Matt Allen, as well as the chair and the mayor, can't get together and resolve these issues. So we do have a one-stop shop. And in retrospect, it can be a one-stop shop. But watching that presentation at the Home Builders, you know, I, I do some construction. I help out contractors, and I've seen this, and I, it just worries me. So it's balancing, we have a contractual agreement. What do we do with that? And it's the will of this commission where we proceed, but you know, with, with our current county neighborhood development, all we're going to do is build, build, build. We're going to need a location for them to house. They have a temporary one now. It's costing the tax dollars, taxpayers more money. I'm concerned about some of the comments that were made at the podium. If they were true, I would ask the county, our interim county administrator to look into those. Those are alarming to me as both a retired police chief and a city county commission. If, if there were comments made of threatening in nature, those need to be looked into post haste. Again, that's just one side of the story, but we, it's been made public, and it needs to be looked into and evaluated. But going back to this, I'm torn. We have a, an agreement, and I think it's, it's the will of this commission. If we have some issues with farmers and those further out in the county, we, I'm sure we can come up with a resolution for that.
I guess I'm the last person to speak. I, I guess I'm not the type of person to be torn by any previous agreements or whatever. If that agreement that was worked on is not in the best benefit of our organizations and for our citizens. So there's three new commissioners that were not a part of the previous work on this. We have a new county administrator, and I think that the reason that there is all of this news is because of some of the issues that were presented to us earlier. I'm kind of of belief that the direction that the county goes is based off of the decisions made by this government board. There's five people up here, and if we have a different idea today than what was yesterday, then I think that we need to consider doing that. So I would be in favor of doing whatever we can to make government less cumbersome when it's so cumbersome that progress is delayed or stopped. I'm not for that. I think that we need to be able to buy the best service we can so that people can move forward as quickly as they can to develop or work or build or whatever, in the case of these. I myself would be interested in a similar thought of what the commissioner.
Thank you, everyone. The issue then is, are you going to breach your agreement? Or are we going to comply with the agreement and adopt the codes as contemplated by it? And if you are going to breach the agreement, what's the plan to the people that are sitting in this room, including the city's representatives, on compliance with this inter-local agreement? Because it replaced the one that we had before. Matt, may you address the commission, please?
Thank you, Matt Allen, city manager. I don't have a plan. I'm just kind of listening to the conversation. The item, as I understand it today, is the codes that the county would apply in this urban growth boundary. Actually, there's been times, let's back up to like maybe ten or fifteen years ago, when someone would have a project, didn't really care for the way it was handled out in the county. They'd come and grab an ear of a county commissioner, whatever. Our staff would have to come back and answer to the application of the codes as our, as the city staff persons who are contractually performing the work for you. And, you know, the acquisition, the accusation would be something along the lines of, well, you know, you know, those folks down in city planning, or they're not doing right, and the inspector wasn't doing it right. What it would, what it usually came down to, I would say a hundred percent of the time, was they didn't care for the code. Well, the code they were using wasn't the city's code. I would disagree with the chairman on that. The city has never administered the city's code out in the county. The city has administered the county's code out in the county. And the, and it would usually be, okay, county commissioners, we can't say no, but we're going to say we can't administratively approve this. If you want to approve this, the county commission needs to waive the application of their own code or call a timeout, change their code, and administer it a different way. So historically, when there's been problems over here and in the Ninth Street Building with the way the Eighth Street Building was handling things, it was usually the application of a county code that someone didn't like the fact that the county's code had that in it. Really didn't have a, an issue with who was doing the work, or the timeliness of the work, or those, those types of things. I would say the most re, more recent versions, in my interpretation, has been the application in county projects of a heightened level of requirement that's above and beyond what your own code says. And when the city would be working on, on, city staff would be working on something, we would be applying the codes that were in place. The developer was experiencing, oh, we'd like you to, you know, put in curb and guttering, or we'd like you to build an entrance in this spot, or whatever. Above and beyond what your code required, administratively, they were hearing a, a higher standard. We couldn't administer, our, our contract was to administer your codes. If, if someone was going to be introducing new requirements, that would have to come, come from staff over here. And I think that led to some of the confusion that began and started part of a march, either from an administrative interest on the part of the county or from a developer interest saying, this is getting super frustrating, to revisit it. The, this item that you had the public hearing on today is really the county. I don't think this is part of the negotiated agreement as much as it is an element in that negotiated agreement. That element that says, county, you have control over what your codes want to look like. If you want to, if you want to heighten the requirements to make them more, look more urban, more like the cities, and it seems to make sense to copy the cities, because if we grow into it and annex it, then stuff would match, then you can do that. But that's purely your decision. You don't have to negotiate that with the city. You can say, these are our rules. We could have had the old system, and you could have done this, which is the system we're using right now, because we actually haven't honored the, you know, purely the agreement. We've put it on pause because it was supposed to get implemented in January one with, which was sort of unrealistic, given the things that had to be done by both parties. But there's large responsibility on, on county councillor's part and, and county staff's part to get a lot of things done before you implement your own planning staff. The, so we've already paused the agreement for who's doing the services. Aside from who's doing the services, you all can determine what your codes are going to be out in the county. And if you want to bifurcate those and say, in the urban area, real close to the boundaries of the city, we want different codes? Cool. Could that be confusing to people? Yeah, but I think the, what I heard in the comments today was, was outside of this issue, but more to the comments of who's going to be doing the work. And, you know, that, that's another decision you all need to make is, if you choose to. We have an agreement that says on July first that we'll administer the stuff that's inside the urban immediate urban growth area in the city of Garden City, and that there will be a little bit of a different setup for those things that are outside of the immediate urban growth area. I think that, I see those as two issues, I guess. What would be the plan if the county would say, uh, we're not so sure about this two planning department thing anymore? I think you'd do what you've done all along, at least for the last two and a half years, is go back to the city, handle it. At least we're having joint meetings now. We could talk about it again at a joint meeting. I mean, there's, there's ways to talk across the street that have, that we've seemingly been able to figure out over the last two and a half years, working on this issue, and in a history of our community, working on over the last four decades in pretty close, close partnerships. So if that was the will of this county commission and is to adjust, I think you'd find, you know, a level of receptivity to explore what that would look like over on our side of the street. Those are all my comments.
Okay, the term of the agreement is from July first of 2025 for three years, commencing on the first day of January of 2025, and we delayed it for six months so that we could have our personnel in place, which we do.
And we delayed it for six months so that we could have our personnel in place, which we do. Under the agreement, it is the county's responsibility to adopt the city code in the defined urban growth area. Are we going to do that or not?
I would like to put another pause. At least until we have new administration in place, maybe give us some time to investigate further and, and work with our new administrator, spend some time visiting with the, the city commission as well.
Madam Councillor, is there any part of that agreement that I missed that allows us to just pause, not doing the things that this commission contracted to do?
No.
Would the failure to adopt the urban growth area regulations as required by the agreement be a breach of that agreement?
The adoption of that is one part of the agreement. And not performing one part of the agreement could be considered a breach of the agreement, yes. I mean, at this point in time, what we did, it's not that it doesn't start until July. It's the agreement itself started in January and runs from January for three years from then. The, the start of the, for lack of a better way to say it, the start of the New World Order starts July 1. We don't have any other agreement in place. This is the agreement that's in place. If we, if we don't adopt this and we don't do this, there, there's nothing else here. I mean, we could sit here and say, we're going to wait for a new administrator, but we don't, we don't have something else in place to, to wait for that. We would have to, I guess if, if that's something you're wanting to look at, I think you're going to have to renegotiate something prior to July 1, which it took us over two years to get to this, and you're looking at six weeks at this point to try to do something with that, not to say that something couldn't be done. Today, really what today is, is adopting that immediate urban growth area. So I think the bigger question for today is, do you want to have the city's standards in place in that immediate urban growth area? Or do you not want the city's standards in place in that immediate growth area? That's not to say that you don't have the ability to go back, as Matt said, whether they're in the joint meetings and talk about how this agreement looks going forward later. Even if we don't stick with this one, you can still say, hey, we want the city's codes in this immediate urban growth area because we believe that it's important to start looking towards the future in that area so that it is easier when it comes, if it comes time for annexation. I think that was the, the purpose and the thought in looking at that. So realistically, for today, is are we adopting this immediate urban growth area or are we not? And that's not to say that that can't change some, this agreement couldn't change if the city and the county both agreed to renegotiate what the rest of the agreement looks like. Or that the county couldn't go back and say, hey, we don't like having these stricter standards in this immediate growth area and, and do away with that resolution.
So I, I, the way I understand it then, is if we approved this today, then down the road, the issues that, of concern that were brought to us today, that we couldn't do something to address those particular issues. But today, we're just approving city codes in that, should the time come for them to annex. I think that's the way I understand it. But then, issues that have popped up in the past, that have created issues for builders and developers and other things, we can address those issues down the road as a board so that maybe where those issues no longer occur. Is that correct?
Correct.
I have a question. You said that if we don't adopt this today, we have nothing else in place. What have we had in place since January 1? What was extended?
The agreement itself contemplates that we're going to be working under the, and it's at the end of the agreement. Let me pull it up. It specifically gives that six-month grace period from January to July 1 within this as a transition period under paragraph 32. If you look at the agreement itself, that we would go and for the purpose of the, the 2015 agreement, which was the last version of this agreement, or of an agreement with the city regarding NDS, was terminated. That agreement no longer exists. We have not been operating under that but for paragraph 32 of this agreement that says, hey, for terms of this transition period, we're going to operate as if that 2015 agreement was still in place. But it's not. It's been terminated. So right now, this new agreement is the only agreement that we are operating under. And the, the old way of doing things ends per this agreement at the end of June. And we start the, the new agreement then. So that's where we're at right now. If we, like I said, today really is, the public hearing and the purpose of it was for hearing comments about whether or not, about adopting this, the city's codes that were referenced for this immediate urban growth area.
And the way I heard testimony earlier, I think those folks agree with city codes. Is that my understanding? Yeah. So if we're adopting that agreement to follow city codes, to me, that sounds like what the people who testified today would be in favor of. And then down the road, then we can manage the county so that it's more streamlined and more user-friendly for folks who haven't had it so used to streamline, so.
So first of all, I appreciate what the city and county, the work they put into this agreement with all the other. I mean, there was a lot of time and energy put into this agreement. And I appreciate the work the city and the county did. But if we approve the codes today and the desire of this commission or a majority of the commission would be to renegotiate, we can do that and work on whether we want two shops or one shop. And what would we need to do if that was the desire of the commission?
And I think part of that is if, if the city has a desire to renegotiate that as well. I mean, our, our agreement at this point in time is that this one is in place for three years, starting back in January. But if the city and the county both come together and decide that that's something that they want to talk about, I think it, probably the easiest place to start with that one would be on one of those joint meetings, I would guess. That Matt has something to add to.
Matt, would you address the commission, please?
More of a question for Cara. I mean, it's an active agreement that the, that the city and county wrote in a delayed start. You know, I would have been fearful of our ability to get a, an addendum that extended that, that grace period a year ago when we negotiated. But I think Gary and I got more work than that done last week together. So I think the, if, if the will of the commission was, we don't know yet if we want to go on July 1 and we want to pick a time period that gives us a, a longer period of time to, to figure out what we're doing. I, I, I think you'll find the city commission agreeable. From a staff perspective, we'd be agreeable to that. Whatever we're going to do, it's going to be for, for three years. So making sure that governing boards and staffs know what's coming is, is worth the time. I think you, I, I think an addendum to the agreement that extends the grace period in that section would be a pretty easy amendment to author in what, you have two more meetings before this thing goes live? We have two more meetings before this thing goes live? I think that could easily be accomplished. I also, again, feel that that's independent from what, what this issue is. I think this checks a box. I think you have a couple other boxes that still remain unchecked that you could do, independent of who's going to do planning, whether that's the city staff or the county staff, you know, whether you have a permit for this or a permit for this, that's a new thing. You know, that can be administered, we, we can figure out how to do that. I think if the, yeah, if, if the will of the county commission was to extend the time, I think the direction would be amend, directing the county councillor to work with the city on an addendum to the existing agreement. Existing agreement meaning the new one that the chairman and the mayor and the respective councillors and administrators negotiated, that has the July 1 start date, be pushed off to some other date.
If you would, please, I have a question for you, Matt. For purposes of continuity, is it in our best interest, our being everybody who pays taxes here, that we adopt the code of the city in the urban growth area, regardless of what we do with this agreement? So we incorporate the city's codes in that urban growth area so that we have uniformity today?
You know, when Mrs. Ann Leicher brought up the taxpayer side of it, and I, you know, I've heard that at the Builders Association meeting too. It's like, I think there, I think there's two sides of that coin. Does it cost more to develop under sort of these urban codes in this area? Upfront, yes. I mean, I, I don't know that there's any way around that. Is it less over, if, if, if that's going to be an area that's going to become fully developed though? And it didn't even have to be city of Garden City, that annex. Those people can incorporate, those properties can incorporate and become a new city if they wanted to. But if they haven't built their infrastructure out to an urban standard and the character of the development is urban, I think that's probably got longer-term tax implications. So is it a year-one tax question, or is it over the course of the next 10 years, tax questions? I do think that in the long run, developing an area where growth, it isn't a city policy decision, like economics has taken development to the north and to the east of the existing Garden City, city limits. If that, if that happens, the, the codes make sense, the, the change in codes. And if this were to remain county and under your collective guidance, I think it makes, you know, that's, that's a decision for you to make, a policy decision for this board to make. Who administers that is, there's the question of, does it cost county taxpayers more to have two planning staffs and city, or one and a half more, you know, half more, three quarters more, however you want to evaluate? I mean, yeah, I mean, the more, the more people, the more people, the more money. And the money comes from taxes. So if you've got two planning departments, you're going to have, you're going to have, county's going to be paying for one in addition to the contracted services you do for the city. And city residents are going to be paying for the one inside the city limits and the one that helps develop property out in the county.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Matt. As I've said a couple of times today, the singular issue before us of whether we're going to incorporate the, adopt by reference the city codes in the urban growth area as defined in the agreement. So Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the adoption of the? Let me get back to the right page so I say it correctly.
Would that be by resolution? That's the resolution that's in there? If you go down a couple of items.
There is a resolution. My thought on the, the urban, what are we calling it? Urban growth area. I think it's a good idea. I think that needs to happen. I think the challenges that have happened in the undeveloped areas of the county were, we attempted to resolve them in a way that may not have been the best way. Rather than, you know, starting a whole new department over here to do that. It would have been nice to, to work with the, the city and try to figure out a way. I've said for years that we need to update the county codes. And I've been saying it, you know, talking about that since I've been a county commissioner. We, I think that needs to be on our priority list and that, I have spoken to that. So if we do adopt this, I don't really think that's a bad thing. But I do want the folks, especially the people who came and spoke today and the other members of the community who may not have been able to be here today, I'd like for them to know that we do take those concerns seriously. And we need to look into how we are taking care of business in those, outside of that urban growth area.
Well, in that light, Vice Chairman, I'm not looking for a pause of the agreement, but I am wanting to have staff work together with the city staff as to whether there needs to be some fine tuning to this agreement going forward. Because one of the things that I learned from a client a long time ago is you can have an existing contract, doesn't mean we can't amend it or change it. We can. And the question is, what are, what direction should we give in the timeline to do that? So let's take him up. First, are we going to pass the Resolution 14-2025 as proposed, Vice Chair?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to do that after I make this comment. I've learned as this meeting has gone on that what this is, is we're approving city guidelines for future urban growth that more than likely the city may be annexing in. So that will make sure that those codes for any building in that area are up to the city codes for, you know, in the future where they take that over. The issues that were brought in front of us by the public earlier are different than what this proposal is today. And I think that this commission has the will to address those concerns from before. So I would like to make a motion today to approve this resolution and that in the future this commission and our administration will work to address these concerns brought to us by the public.
Can we make a simple motion, Commissioner, to?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to make a simple. Motion. I've got my mind on other stuff right now. Yes, I make a motion that we approve.
And particularly Resolution 14-2025 as proposed.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Resolution 14-2025. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The resolution passes. Now, Commissioner Vasquez, what would you like to direct staff to do with regard to the agreement that was entered into in 2024? And what direction do you and the Vice Chairman want to go on that?
I, I think that, nothing at this time. I, I think that Commissioner Yutz and a few others, we have some discussion as a commission and as a staff to see if there's a way to combine efforts the way that it was before in the past. Maybe we can streamline government to make it easier for people who want to work on that growth. And I think that I've had conversations with Commissioner Yutz about that. So today, I don't really have any, unless you do, Mike, have any thoughts about future direction?
When weighing the totality of what we have, again, I'll reiterate what I said. I have an experience in building bridges, not tearing them.
I have an experience in building bridges, not tearing them down. I think when we lose our communication piece between county and city that brings something like this forward, I, I think we need to look at reevaluating. And there's no reason to wait for a new county administrator. I think Gary and Matt have a great communication piece going on. And I believe, before I comment further, I'd like to hear from Gary his thoughts. And I'm, I'll put you on the spot here, Gary. Your, your thoughts on neighborhood development, balancing the county and the city? Or is there, is there really a need to have two separate?
Well, you know, I, I've only been here a short time. I've tried to look back at various communications and talked with a number of people. And it seems to me that over a period of time, some of the communications between the city and county with regard to some of these development and planning issues probably was not as strong as it had been in previous years. And so I think some, because of some of that communication, you know, where, where we are today. And I think there was, you know, to be honest with you, I think there was a lot of good work that was put into this and trying to keep this, this, this going. But when you look at the, the situation, I think that we could, we could look at getting back together, strengthening that communication. I mean, I, in talking with some people, there would be some strategies that I would implement if, if I were the one that was doing this, that I think would help with trying to, you know, keep this, keep this similar to what we had. I mean, I think on probably on both sides, probably the city and the county, we could, we could do some things to tweak that process. And I think that it would actually strengthen our development, our ability to, to plan and control development in a way that I think would be beneficial to the community without the duplication, without the, some of the things that maybe have been mentioned today. So I, I, I certainly would be willing to work with, with the city on trying to, if that's the desire of the, of the commission. It's to, to try to see if we could, you know, place a pause, if you will, on this to, to try to get this, I mean, this development agreement, as I understand it, expires or is, goes into effect in, in, in July. But between now and then, I'd be glad to try to do what I can to work with the city and see if there's a way we could help move this forward in a way that would be acceptable to the commission and to the city council.
And I, I think that would be helpful as we approach budget season, to see if we're going to continue to budget the planning office that we have or if there's going to be some streamlining and some dominate or whatever so that maybe in agreement with the city costs less and so that could have an impact on our budget season for consideration.
So I, I appreciate that, Gary. We've had discussions, you and I, on this issue. And I'm going to revert back to a comment Matt made that maybe what we needed to consider is an addendum, having an addendum made to pause this agreement so that maybe some communication between Gary and Matt can happen and so that we can see. I mean, it, it may come back to, we are where we're at and so forth, but there has been a lot of work put in this. I don't know all the backstory. The truth somewhere in the middle, what's, what, what caused this? But I, I, I think we should consider an addendum to pause the agreement and allow Gary and Matt to see what, what can be changed.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to, to ask Gary, as, as you've already offered, to just touch base with Matt and see what the two of you can come up with going forward. I'd also really like to encourage, and I don't know, you know, what impact you could have on it, but we really need to update the county codes. I think that was the problem that kind of started this whole challenge. And I've offered several times, I'll be happy to help with that in any way that I can and, and I stand by that. I'll be happy to help.
Right, I think we've killed that issue for today. It's one that's going to come back, we know. And we'll look for staff's recommendations, June 2nd and 19th, and working with the city. But for now, we at least have adopted their codes in the urban growth area and got a playbook for folks. We're going to take a break until 10 after 10, and we'll reconvene at that time and hear back from Roxanne. Commission, back to order. Thank you, everyone, for the break. I know periodically we run until something is done. And Roxanne, you've been patiently waiting to get back on the CBB budget request. And after you introduce yourself, I'll ask the commission for questions.
Roxanne Lancy, Executive Director of the Fannie County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Good morning again, Roxanne. Commissioners, do you have any questions regarding the outside agency requests?
I do. One quick question, Roxanne. I was in '23, you have income on interest of $6,000, if I'm reading the lines correctly. Nothing last year, '24?
No, that interest income was reimbursement from the previous year. And it was, you're talking about, you're going to have to tell me again, let's go back to, yeah, interest earned. And 2024 actual, you know what? You're probably right. There probably is some that I left off, and I apologize.
Well, you do invest your idle funds, hopefully, with?
We do. We have CDs. Yes, sir.
I, you know, I would work with the treasurer, he's pre-adapted that process.
Absolutely.
I have a question. Where does this show your reserves on here?
Yeah, our reserves is not, are not shown in here. We have not ever done that in the past. And right now, I can tell you currently where our reserves are roughly at $187,000, roughly. That's not a perfect estimate, but I know that that's in the realm.
Do we not require that, that reserves are shown?
Generally, yes. Because it's reflective of the, you can do the interest income and pretty much calculate the reserves at 5%. All right. Any other questions? Roxanne, I'd just like to point out that your funding request is a million five, and it's really just a pass-through of the hotel tax.
Correct. And, and not necessarily do we expect to get a million five, it's just that we budget so that we know that, we try not to have any carryover. And so therefore, that is, because we are an anomaly, we do receive the transient tax. And so therefore, that quarterly payment, just to ensure that we don't have to wait till the next year to receive those funds.
And I don't want any of the viewing public to think that their ad valorem taxes are going to fund this outside agency, but rather this is a bed tax that flows through to your agents.
Correct. The Fannie County Convention and Visitors Bureau, unless you stay in a hotel, is to the Fannie County taxpayer an investor. We cost the Fannie County resident absolutely zero dollars.
Very good. Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So I am new, so I'm sorry, but I just don't understand this. So if, if the CBB gets money from the sales tax dollars?
No, not from sales tax dollars, from the transient tax.
Which is a sales tax.
It is a sales tax, but it is specific to the lodging facilities.
And then why does it come before us? Why do we have to approve?
Because of the way that the state, it, state statute.
Okay.
There are, it's a specific use tax. The specific use of this tax is for the recruitment and marketing of tourism in Fannie County. It allows us to be able to promote ourselves without costing the Fannie County residents anything.
Okay. So we really don't have the authority to say no? Or, or, that's what my question really is. What, what are we really saying if we approve this?
Gary, can you address that?
Yes. What happens is a city or a county, it could, it could be either one, in this particular case, the county, has, has adopted a transit guest tax and, and. has, has adopted a transient guest tax, and, and I don't know what that percentage is.
It's six percent currently.
Six percent. And so that, that is levied every year. Now, you could, you could change that levy if you wanted to. But, and there is a maximum levy that you can levy. But you, what happens is that's levied every year, and then that money goes towards the designated purpose, which is the C V B. So what, what you end up doing is levying that tax, giving it to C V B to promote the community and, and the events that, excuse me, that, that occur. But you could certainly change that levy if you wanted to and have a lesser or probably a greater. I don't know that you'd want to go greater, but you could do a lesser.
This commission retains the authority to use the C V B tax revenue.
Yeah.
Transient guest tax, let me call it that, the C V B tax, in a manner deemed appropriate by the commission for the purposes of tourism.
Yeah.
We have chosen traditionally by our resolution that set the rate at six dollars, or six percent, to use it and pay it over to C V B for operational costs.
Yeah.
There are commissions that do other things with C V B tax dollars.
Within the.
Inclined to do that.
Yeah, right, within the relegation of the state statute, right?
Well, and we have some colorful attorney general opinion on.
Yes, we do.
Tourism dollars and all of those kinds of things. And I, I think that we, as a commission, have plenty to do rather than try to.
Promote tourism.
Yeah, and with other projects that may or may not fall within this not less than muddy-watered statute that the legislature gives us to deal with.
I, I would like to also offer that some of that bed tax has been used for incentives, specifically for.
Parrot Cove Water Park.
Yes, ma'am. Cove was one of them. I think we were going to have another one out there by Target in that new development.
There was a request.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it is also used for incentives for specifically hotels and tourism related.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand it a little bit better, because I think this is the only agency that, excuse me, that is kind of done differently than most of the other.
We are the anomaly, yes.
That we do, so just wanted to understand a little bit better how that works. And, but I still am not sure what we're saying yes or no to on the budget. I guess just that, okay, we hear what you're saying, and we're good with that, or?
I think what you're, what you're really saying here is that, again, you're going to levy, or, or, sorry, not levy, but there is going to be a certain amount of bed tax applied to, you know, the rooms that are, that are rented. And you could, as indicated, you could say, we're going to allow the C V B to have X amount of that, and we're going to use X amount for something else. It does have to be for tourism-type, type programs or, or events and that kind of thing. But, so you wouldn't have to give the entire amount, but as the chairman indicated, the, the commission has just normally given the, the full amount to the C V B. But if you did have a particular request for something that would fall within the statutory guidelines, you could say, we're going to give so much in, to the C V B and so much to this particular project.
Okay. Thank you. That, that makes sense to me. I apologize.
I don't think apology is right. Where being better informed is not an apology. And, and secondly, we can raise that rate if we choose to. I don't think we'd want to do that without first hearing from the hoteliers who collect that tax.
We've, it's been at four. It was at four for.
It was at four percent. In two thousand eleven, I believe, we raised that to the six percent. And we have been at six percent since then. There was some conversation about raising it. Dodge City is currently at eight percent. Dodge City, and if you look at the Overland Park area, Overland Park area is at ten. However, we're in the middle of the pack, and that's usually where we've stayed. Our independents would have some struggle had we, if we do raise a tax, just because they can only charge so much for their rooms.
Hayes and Liberal.
Hayes is at seven percent currently, and Liberal is at five percent. So we're right in the middle of the pack.
Okay. Any other questions about the budget request for the outside agency of C V B? And if not, then we need a motion to take the budget request under advisement.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second to take the budget request under advisement. Hearing of further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Thank you. Don't go anywhere. Next on the agenda is the appointment of.
Michael Gonzalez.
Yes, to the, to your board.
Michael Gonzalez is the chaplain at St. Catherine's Hospital. He would be replacing your previous appointment of his brother, Robert Gonzalez, whom I have hired in the house, in-house. My apologies for that. But I'm very excited about the new staff that we have on board, and I'm very excited about Michael wanting to come on. I think Michael will be a good asset. He will be filling an at-large seat. They're three-year appointments. Michael's appointment currently is a one-year, replacing really Jessica Wykoff on the board, who termed out.
So this is an appointment to fill Jessica's unexpired.
Unexpired term, yes.
For one year.
For one year. And then he has the option of three, three-year terms.
Questions on the application of Michael Gonzalez to be appointed to the C V B board for a period of one years, filling the unexpired term of Ms. Wykoff?
I just have a comment. Michael's an amazing guy. If any of you know him, he's wonderful. And I have no doubt that he would be amazing, but I really have a problem with nepotism. I, I think maybe it's not a good idea with Robert being, or Bobby.
We did have this conversation internally with our board when the nomination came to be. Michael is one vote out of ten. And Michael has always been very fair. We are in Fannie County. Someone is always related to someone. And the board felt that Michael could be fair enough, and not only fair enough, but there were none other votes to supersede if they felt, and I have, as you know, you know, most of the people on my board, we have a very strong board with very strong opinions. If they feel that there's an issue, they're going to bring it to the surface quickly. However, thank you for addressing it.
If not, motion to appoint Michael to the board to fill the unexpired term of Jessica for the term of one year.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to appoint Michael Gonzalez to fill the unexpired term on the C V B board for a one-year term. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
I'm going to say nay, just for my reason.
Understand.
Very good. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Appointment to the library board. Vice Chairman Germaine, you don't have to gut up or to do anything. Do you have anybody from the library here to address the?
I do not, so.
And so what do we need to do?
So we have three openings on the library board. One full-term, replacing Jay Cook. That'll be four years, ending the end of April in two thousand twenty-nine. Jay is eligible for another term, but due to health reasons, has decided not to proceed that. We have an unexpired term of three years, replacing Marcia Wright, who had, for personal reasons, is going to have to step down early. And one unexpired one-year term, replacing Paula Kimbrell, who is stepping down for personal reasons. We put out a request for applicants, and I was, like, thrilled. We had five applications, and there's amazing applicants. I don't think we could go wrong with any of those. You have all of those applications, letters of interest before you. Commissioners, I don't know if you have any thoughts or any questions for me.
No, I, I really want to hear your recommendations. We have three positions to fill, one four-year term, correct?
Correct.
One, three-year, two-year term, one one-year.
One one-year term. The, the unexpired term could then potentially run for two four-year terms. So that, that three-year unexpired term could end up being a long, a long term, if somebody wanted that, but.
Well, there are a lot of issues with the library right now, and the board members need to be dedicated to purpose. However, the wisdom of prior commissions here was to delegate the chair position to someone else to serve on the library board, and Madam Vice Chairman, you've taken that and run with it. And I'd like to hear which persons you want to fill those positions, because you get to serve with.
I know. I was hoping somebody else would say, oh, we really need.
Well, this isn't a popularity contest. This is what's in the best interest of the board.
Absolutely, and I don't think there's a wrong answer. But with that being said, I would recommend that we would appoint, what's his first name, Joe Gonzalez. We'll start with the unexpired one-year term. And. Got to. Get my names in front of me. I'm sorry, I should have been better. So the, to fill the unexpired three-year term, I would like to recommend, and I can't pronounce her name, she goes by Jumai Ewan, I think. And then for the full term, I would like to recommend Veronica Goosey.
I move we appoint those folks to the library board, as mentioned.
Moved and seconded that Joe Gonzalez be appointed for a one-year term on the board. That I'm going to do my very best. Ms. Ewan to the three-year term. And Veronica Goosey to the four-year term. Is there any further discussion on the motion and the second before the commission? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Congratulations to the appointees. And Madam Vice Chair, good luck with the continued work at the library board. We have some challenging issues that we need to get through to help everyone better understand the relationship between the board and this commission. Thank you for your work. It's not easy work, by the way. Okay, we had our public hearing at nine o'clock. Is there any need for an executive session now, since I put you on the spot before? No? Good. We then get right to economic development and an update. We'll hear from the president.
Good morning. You guys have taken on a lot today. I would thank you for your conversation related to the Neighborhood Development Services Agreement. It's no secret that our office has spent a significant amount of time over the last few years trying to resolve challenges and trying to assist our developers in completing projects that ultimately benefit all of the taxpayers of this community and you as a commission in making budget decisions. In our, in our tenure, my team's tenure, we've more than doubled the tax base of this community. And that's been done through the recruitment of really incredible businesses. We've been really fortunate in our work. But a big part of what allows those folks and why they choose Fannie County is because of the relationship between the city, the county, the community college, all of our partners. That relationship, as you've heard multiple times this morning, has been tenuous at best for the last few years. And quite frankly, your taxpayers deserve better. And your agencies shouldn't be spending their time correcting concerns that should not have existed to begin with. So certainly appreciate you providing some direction on that, and, and would be remiss not to thank Gary for his leadership and his willingness to work with the folks who are doing the good work of this community. We appreciate that very much. So thank you, as commissioners, for taking that on. Other things that are happening, housing, we are making some good progress there. City of Holcomb, last week, we, we adopted the, the housing study over there, and they have a large R H I D project that's working through the process. We've been assisting them. This is their first time doing an R H I D, so that's exciting. And Holcomb definitely has been an area where I think they've, they've been interested in having housing, but had very limited land available to them. So we were finally able to get a parcel that's adjacent to the city annexed in so that these folks could move forward with the development. So we're very excited for them. I think that's going to be a good project. And then the M I H ARPA project, the one that received funding from K H R C, that was formerly called Sligo Station. Sligo Station has now been relocated, so this is a separate project that's moving forward with those funds. They are anticipating to start, that they'll start construction in July. Our fingers are certainly crossed. That's all multifamily, which is desperately needed in our community right now, so we'd absolutely take all of that that we can get. And then through that conversation, we've been able to attract another housing developer from the, kind of the South Sioux City area, which they're very familiar with the empirical folks and excited about helping empirical grow here the same way that they've grown there. So I think they're going to continue to look for some additional opportunities to bring housing. They reached out last week to talk about some additional multifamily, as well as some single-family opportunities that they may be able to bring. And sometimes there's a great benefit in having those folks from other areas come in with their ideas, because we, you know, we tend to get pretty focused on what we do and what our builders do well. And anything we can do to be creative and build more houses is going to be very beneficial, so excited about that. Another update on the childcare situation, we still don't really know how, how all of the new regulations are going to impact childcare and, and who provides that and how much people are willing to pay for that going forward. There's, there's certainly, I think, some consternation among some of the centers in town. We've had multiple conversations with the centers that do full range of care from birth through school age. Two kind of separate, but maybe related issues there. Because of the success and the great work that they do at Garfield Early Childhood Center, the three-to-five-year-olds aren't being enrolled in private childcare programs, by and large. That is good in that those three-to-five-year-olds are still getting great services through, through the school district, and we're appreciative of that. However, not having those three-to-five-year-olds in the centers makes it extremely difficult to pay for the infant and toddler care, which is really where you spend the money. The, the ratio for teacher to, to child is much higher for infants and toddlers, as you can imagine. And so the model doesn't work if you don't have those three-to-five-year-olds to kind of supplement the care for the infants and toddlers. So what we thought was solved, what we felt pretty confident we had finally landed where we needed to be with that, is now kind of upended between the legislation and the lack of three-to-five-year-olds in need of care. So we'll keep you posted on that. We're continuing to work hard on that. Derek, the Assistant City Manager, is the chairman of the Childcare Board, and he's doing great work to try to, try to get that figured out, if you will, determine what K D H E is going to do, what the legislator is going to do further, and what it means for us as a community. So we'll keep, we'll keep working on that. We do appreciate the county gave significant dollars to help with those efforts. The county and the city, for those of you that don't know, both committed six hundred thousand dollars to childcare, and we greatly appreciate that. We've seen tremendous improvement, but it's going to be a constant battle, apparently, when we're changing legislation and other projects. So happy to answer any questions I can.
Well, we can't blame Topeka for everything, but on this one, they seem to miss the ball again.
I think we can. I think we can.
Early childhood development ought to be a priority as part of the school budget. That's just the chair's perspective. Any questions for economic development? Keep up the hard work.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Stephanie Rousch about the community corrections and the purchase of a new vehicle. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioner. Stephanie Rousch, Fannie County Department of Corrections. This morning, our, our agency is seeking bid approval and authorization to purchase a new vehicle. Previously, a budget adjustment was approved to purchase the new vehicle. The 25th Judicial District reallocated grant funds out of salaring benefits for the FY25 fiscal year to purchase this vehicle. These funds have to be expended prior to June 30th, 2025, or we do have to return them to the Kansas Department of Corrections. The agency, we sent out bid requests to five different dealerships. Of those five, we did receive three bids back for a 2023 Chevy Traverse for less than 25,000 miles. Of those three, McCarthy-Olathe Chevrolet submitted a bid that met all specifications. Lewis Motors of Garden City submitted a bid for a vehicle with 43,934 miles, and Lewis Motors of Dodge City submitted a bid for a GMC Acadia. All vehicles that were submitted are from reputable dealers, certified use, and they appear to be in good condition. So the alternatives are to allow the purchase of the 2023 Chevy Traverse from McCarthy Chevrolet for $35,700, or reject the McCarthy bid and choose another bid.
Was the bid, I'm looking at the one, the actual mileage of 30,000 and a bid of $30,000, a bit less. Why, why did you choose the more expensive vehicle?
The McCarthy vehicle, Traverse, fit all bid specifications and it had a mileage of 9,105.
Okay, I thought your specifications were to have no more than 23,000.
And the specifications for the mileage was less than 25,000 miles.
Why did we set the specifications at 25,000?
That is what we prior, we did prior to when we did our last vehicle bid.
Okay, we have a local dealer authorizing with a one-year warranty on a vehicle that has 5,000 more than the specifications. And repair work probably be done much more locally. Those are my thoughts. I'll let the commissioners have the floor.
Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning.
Why is it that we asked for specifically a 2023 Chevy Traverse? I, I don't care about the all-wheel drive, silver, white, or blue.
We had, did a bid prior to for, for a Chevy Traverse that the agency purchased a couple years ago. And that vehicle has seemed to do good for our agency, so that's why we went with a 2023 or newer Chevy Traverse this time.
From my experience and also with my current work, I've, I've had a Traverse and I've gotten an Explorer. They both do the same thing. Why didn't we just ask for an all-wheel drive, sports utility vehicle, approximate year with less than 25,000 miles? I just see a broader response back from our local dealers on asking for those type of vehicles.
Sure.
I, I, I just, I like to stay local, if possible. And I, I kind of, I, I agree with the chairman about the local vehicle, the warranty work, but asking specifically for a Chevy Traverse, it sometimes it gives, just doesn't give a good appearance. And, and I, I guess in the future, I would ask for you strongly consider looking at sports utility vehicle and kind of maybe what type of cargo space you want or need. I understand the all-wheel drive, especially with the traveling that you do.
Right. Here we can look at that.
Whenever you buy a used vehicle, it's more important to know who's going to service the thing and what, who's going to stand behind it than it is as to how many miles it actually has. That's just from the chair's perspective, and I, I'm not going to hold you up on this. Is there any further discussion on the request to purchase the new vehicle? Not the new used vehicle.
It's new to them.
Yes.
And not hearing it, is there a motion from the commission to authorize this purchase?
Mr. Chair, I make the motion to allow the purchase of the 2023 Chevrolet Traverse from McCarthy Chevrolet for, in the amount of $35,700.
Is there a second?
Second.
I move and seconded to do the purchase as stated in the motion. A question to the administrator, sufficient funds to pay this?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. I'm sure our auditors would be real happy that we made the cash basis in budget log inquiry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, three to two.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Gary, with the, Mager has the floor for the interim county administrator's resolution proposed of 13/2025 declaring the intent to authorize the disbursement of expenditures related to the acquisition and installation of HVAC improvements. Sir?
Thank you, Commissioner. On March 17th, Drew Rose and Jeffrey Bogner from Integrated Consulting Engineers presented the board with the VRF study, which is a heating and air conditioning unit for four buildings in Fannie County. These consisted of the administration building, courthouse, attorney building, and library. And the Integrated Consulting Engineers recently estimated the cost of equipment at about $700,000. It was actually 600 and some thousand, but we rounded up to 700 because they were still in the process of trying to identify the, the cost of the equipment. And this would be, and so in order to permit and expedite the acquisition of equipment, the county needs to be able to expend available funds for this. So what this resolution does, it, it allows you to, it allows us to go ahead and, and spend the money for the equipment. One of the problems we, I think, was talked about during the presentation from Integrated, the Integrated Engineering Resources, is the fact that the equipment is no longer going to be made after this year. There's a certain amount that's available right now. We're trying to move as quickly as we can to purchase the equipment that we need. And so they are working feverishly to try to get this system designed. There's about a two to three-month lag time by the time we order it until we get the equipment, and so we're trying to lock that in. In this particular case, what this, what this resolution does, it, it doesn't commit to, it, it doesn't, it does not require that the county finance these, these improvements as indicated. It simply preserves the right if the county would decide to pay itself back. We're going to take the funds out of the BRMP to purchase this equipment. And then, then one of the things we found is that lenders are not normally willing to lend money if they don't have collateral that they can attach. So we may have to, when we, when we go to the lease purchase, we may have to include and reimburse ourselves for some of this so that this, the lenders will have some stock, you might say, into that equipment and will lend, lend the money. But the, so this resolution really, i- i- if the board adopts it, would, would be to, you know, approve Resolution 13-2025 declaring the intent to authorize the reimbursement of expenses related to the acquisition and installation of the HVAC improvements to the county, or the board could reject the resolution. So this, all this does is allow us to declare this equipment as tax, tax exempt if, in fact, we were to decide to include it in a reimbursement later on.
Source of the funding, Gary?
The BRMP.
What's BRMP?
I'm sorry. The, the Building Maintenance Reserve Program.
Very good. And there's adequate funds there to pay the 700,000?
Yes, and it, it will go to that one and the next one, but we are able to get a, a better deal, but this will go up to 700,000.
And please, everyone, keep in mind that if we don't do this now, we may miss the window and the cost of improvements may skyrocket. So this is something that needs to be done right away.
Mr. Chairman, I move we pass Resolution 13-2025.
Second?
I move and seconded to pass Resolution 13/2025 as presented. It's 13, oh, excuse me.
13.
13 is right. 2025 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And also, part of the paperwork today is for the clerk to sign the certificate of an excerpt of minutes as the board reviewed that excerpt. And it would be Commissioner Jones moved the resolution to be adopted. It was seconded by Commissioner Baske. And what you signed and said. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Mr. Administrator, you have a second authorization?
Yes, sir. After, after the presentation in March from Integrated Consulting Engineers, the commissioners at their April 7th meeting was presented with a contract with Integrated Consulting Engineers to do the design work for the VRF project. From that, the, the Integrated Consulting Engineers has been working on the design, identifying the equipment that's going to be needed, and they've determined that, and we're moving pretty quickly on some of this. So that's why there's a difference between, the question came up, why 700,000 with regard to the amount that would be tax exempt and, and the amount of 512,000? Because what was happening is there were so many things going on at the time that the engineers have actually identified that the equipment there, that we could purchase right now would be 512,000. So the request right now is to, is to authorize an amount of 512,000 to be funded from the Building Repair and Maintenance Program. And this would be purchased for the administration building, the courthouse, the attorney building, and the library. And this would be purchased through National Sales Company out of St. Louis. That's who the vendor is on this, and I talked with them this morning. We'll have to work through some agreements on how we pay for it. But the, if we could get the authorization to make the purchase, then we could go forward with trying to get the equipment ordered so that it's still available and we could get it here. We're hoping that by the time we get it, we'll have the design done, maybe we'll be talking to the contractors and have it delivered to whatever contractor that we select so that they can store that and then move forward with the repair and replacement of their equipment.
Is the first order of business to waive the bid purchase requirement, bid requirement of the commission? And then, secondly, then move?
Yeah, we, if, if you would, if you would do that, we, we weren't able to, to, to do this because we're having to move so quickly on this and get, you know, I believe this is a good price based on what the estimates originally were and where we are right now.
And I think the reason for waiving of bid requirements is A, it's very specialized equipment, B is, is it's an emergency, and C is that without the, if we incur any further delay, we may risk multiplying the cost of this equipment.
Yes.
And there's no reason for delay. A motion to waive the bid process on the $512,000 HVAC purchase.
I so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I move and seconded to waive the county's bid policy on the purchase of this equipment in the amount of 512,000. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now a new motion to accept alternative number one and direct the commissioner to proceed.
I so move.
To accept alternative one.
I second.
And second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Happy hunting, Gary.
Thank you.
All right, well, next, hear from Kelly Munyon with regard to our wage study or compensation study firm recommendation. Can I call it wage study?
Yeah, either one is fine.
All right. Please introduce yourself for the viewing public.
Kelly Munyon, Human Resource Director. And so this morning, the board's being asked to consider a recommendation from the Compensation Study Selection Committee on a firm to conduct this study. The committee consisted of the Fiscal Committee, Human Resources, Commissioner Kevin Baske, and Commissioner Mike Utes. On April 7th, the Board of County Commissioners approved Fannie County Human Resources to prepare and send out requests for proposals for a firm to conduct a compensation study. Three firm, or excuse me, three RFPs were sent out and all were returned timely. On May 7th, the selection committee met and reviewed the RFPs that were received. At that time, it was decided to move forward with interviewing two of the three. That was the Arnold Group and McGrath Human Resource Group. On May 12th, the selection committee sat through presentations and Q and A with both firms, ultimately coming to a unanimous decision on recommending a firm to move forward with having the county's best interest in mind. So, so the Arnold Group, just for a little bit of background on the both, and then why we're making the recommendation we are, they've been in business for 14, excuse me, 46 years in several different HR roles, recruitment, job placement, and whatnot. We were their first compensation study back in 2019. In the last six years, they have enhanced their compensation study blueprint that they had done back with us then, but it still seems to be maybe a work in progress trying to perfect it. McGrath Human Resource Group, they've been in business for 25 years, from what we gathered and from the recommendations that came from other counties that I had reached out to and cities, they've got a proven and consistent product that they have used this entire time. They do specialize in public safety, so police, fire, EMS, and communications, which, as you know, is a majority of what we have here. They did keep their presentation very high level, allowing for plenty of time for questions from the committee members. They were able to confidently answer all questions from us as well. So while both offer similar services, ongoing maintenance, and everything that we asked for in our request for proposal, after the interviews with each, it is a recommendation of the selection committee, excuse me, that we move forward with getting a contract from McGrath Human Resource Group to provide to the board and to the county councillor for review. So the alternatives would be to accept our recommendation and move forward with getting a contract from McGrath Human Resources Group, or not accept our recommendation and ask us to go ahead and move forward with the Arnold Group, or you can decline both and direct staff to move in a different direction.
Is there any reason in this instance you didn't go ahead and tell us in your agenda that you wanted us to accept alternative number two?
They told me to prepare. I, I had tried to talk through that with the administrator and the clerk on how to present this, and I wasn't, that's how I was told to, to do this, so.
Very good. We'll take that up at planning then. Questions for Kelly?
I have a question. Were fees a part of this, or have they, have they presented?
They did. So the Arnold Group, it'll be around 66,000, and then McGrath came back around 72,000.
Okay. And commissioners on that committee, was that the two of you? Any thoughts for us?
It was, I was really starting to get interested in the Arnold Group, but I'm a firm believer that when you're given a time limit and told, what, twice, Kelly, I think, during the interview process, that your time's about up to give the board ample time to ask questions. And it went on for another 20 minutes and we only had an hour set aside. They oversold, tried to oversell themselves. The other part of it is McGrath has more experience. The other part of it is McGrath has more experience in public safety and longer experience in the compensation study than the Arnold Group. And the McGrath Group has more experience, I think, in the Midwest and Western Kansas agencies in doing compensation studies. And keep in mind, the compensation study is not just wages. It's the entire package that they will compare. So when we look at things, we can evaluate everything. And the other thing that was recommended by both groups was, don't stop here. I know McGrath Group would be available every year, or at a fee, of course, to, if something comes up, to reevaluate step or something like that.
Yeah, both of them had maintenance plans that kind of we could pick what we wanted and how much we wanted or how little we wanted moving forward. But I do think it's a good idea because the last couple we've done have really just, that's happened, and then nothing further has happened with them.
And McGrath also gave a lot of versatility for staff to work with them, with the group. One of them was, what type of pay structure do you want? Do you want to pay for performance? Do you want a step increase? You want a step increase with COLA attached to it? So there was more opt to work with HR and the county administrator and department heads. Department heads are going to play a huge role in this as well.
And what is their procedure for doing this study?
Pre-intense.
They discuss that?
Yeah, they would.
I'll fill in the blanks.
So they would come out initially to kick it off, but it would be at first a lot of information that I would provide from my office. And then again, they're going to go out to the employees, not to each employee specifically. You know, where we have, I don't know, 20 jail deputies, they will pick a jail deputy to give some, somebody will pick, not, I'm not saying them, some sheriff's office may pick. So that maybe not every employee, but they can work together to talk and to give that information back. So they can, they're going to review our job descriptions as well, look at the classification, making sure all the FLSA and everything is good. I mean, just work, they would give updates to the board, to the administrator, to myself. I'd be working very closely with them, so. But I think there's a few different times that they would be here on site, and of course, the finale, at the very end, they would be here to present it. But we have, say, as the employer, as we're going along, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, you know, what we have the financial means to do. You know, they can come in and give this whole big picture of this is where it ultimately could be with a $9 million price tag or something crazy. You know, realistically, that's not where we can be. So, you know, that's working with the board, the directors, the administrator on financially where we can be, but how we can move the needle a little bit from where we're at.
And who would the comparison be made to? Would it be other similar entities in the state of Kansas or nationally? How do they?
Yeah, county, cities, but also our local private employers that we compete with. We did talk to them about the eastern part of the state. We get a lot of directors wanting to compare us to Butler and Overland Park and all the places, Sedgwick County. That's kind of a love-hate thing to do. I mean, it's needed, but on the other hand, that's really not who we're competing with. So it's, they would work with the directors on that as well, though.
Your question is done.
So you got it recommended. You think the additional cost was well worth the?
By far, absolutely. I think we'll get, it's worth it.
Commissioner Gurman, were your thoughts completed?
I think I would agree with what the committee has decided. I don't see any reason that we wouldn't. I would, are you ready for a motion, or?
I just want to make sure you weren't cut off.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Let it in on your time.
No problem. No problem. I think that's all of the questions. How, well, one more question. When could they start and how long will it take?
It's going to be about a six-month process. And I believe they were the ones that said it'd be a few weeks to a month. I think they were, one of them was going to be out of town, but the other one could kick off a little bit of it.
And they did mention that if we have budget.
Oh, meetings, they could give us a preliminary number for the budget. So they know that we're going to need that a little bit ahead of time. So, yeah. But the Arnold Group's timeframe was quite a bit shorter, maybe by two or three months, I believe. But I don't think there's any harm in doing six months and taking our time and doing things correctly. So we're still looking at year-end.
That's all I have.
All right. Well, then, you do, ready to make a motion?
Yes, I would move that we accept the McGrath Human Resource Group proposal.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve alternative number two from McGrath at a cost of $72,000. Is there any further discussion? Is there an agreement that we need to sign?
Not yet. I will, now that we have this, we will ask them for that, and we'll get it over to Kara, and she can get it to you guys for review.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we've been over this governance model quite a few times. Gary, give us a short version of this.
Okay. Okay. Each year, the commission, the commissioners, elected officials, directors get together to review the mission, vision, values, goals, and take a look at what they want, what direction they want to go for the future. What you have before you is the most recent model has been updated for 2025. And so your options are to accept the governance model as presented, or to accept it with modifications, or you can give us, give the staff more direction on what direction you would like to go. I will tell you that we, I've talked with our staff, and we're going to start tomorrow if you adopt it today, and trying to put some performance objectives together as we've talked about, so we'll be working on that. So I think that what you have is something that I think all of you and the staff feel comfortable with in your governance model, and I would recommend that you accept it the way it is.
Gary, how many years have you been in public service?
Actually, 40, almost 50 years.
Is this a good piece of work, in your opinion?
Absolutely. You know, I will say that a lot of governing bodies don't go through this process, and I think it's a good opportunity for everyone to get together and, you know, collectively come up with a direction that you all feel comfortable with. And I would like to see a lot more governing bodies do something like this.
Very good. Commissioner Utes, kudos to you for taking the lead on this. Is there any comments you wish to make?
No, a lot of good work by input by commission, elected officials and department heads. Gary, appreciate your head in this. Keep in mind the strategic goals that we laid out here, and then the mapping that Gary and the department heads are, you know, basically a 12 to 18-month updates. We're almost six months into this, so I would encourage the commission, as Gary mentioned earlier on, or in the past, that we look at doing this earlier in the year than later and putting, again, I've said this before, putting five-year goals out here. If you get elected on this commission, you may not be back in five years. So I think we stay, staying focused on 12 to 18 months is a good timeline. And we can always add something that may start today. It may bypass. That may not get done, but we're working on it.
I agree. I want to say thanks for your work on it, but also, would you recommend then that we revisit these goals, vision, values, and goals, strategic goals? Second meeting in January or first meeting in February of 2026?
Two things. One, probably second meeting or January or first meeting, February, either one. But I believe Gary and/or the next administrator, we would ask them to bring these to us so that we get updated on them, so that we can keep it moving forward and be prepared in January or February. So probably the first week of February would be a good time.
We won't engrain them in stone or set a date, but thank you for all your work. Other, other questions for Gary before he departs?
I just have a comment. I think this is well done, and I think it does represent our goals and objectives very well. I think it is very well done. I just have a problem with what we call it. I don't think it makes any sense. Governance model. And it's on our website, and the public looks at it, and they, like, what is that? I don't know if they even know where to look for what our goals are. So I would like to see it named something else. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that, and I won't be insistent on it, but it's just my thought.
Well, it also includes your mission, vision, and values, so it's not just. That's what?
It's almost like two different documents.
Well, it's.
Mission, the vision and mission really shouldn't change year to year, nor should your values.
Right.
Your goals and priorities would definitely need to be changed in my opinion.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate it.
So goals and priorities, you think, is a good, or does Gary have a thought on it?
No, I think you're right in the fact that I think the governance really is the mission and the values and your vision, but then your goals, I think, is really kind of a separate thing. So I think you could break that out.
Or as the tenured professor of commission just told us, maybe add a line or two, but let's do that next year. For now, motion to approve the governance model as proposed by the administrator and committee chair, Utes, on this governance model for 2026, '25.
So moved.
I'll second.
Seconded to approve the piece of work that everybody worked very hard at. Is there any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Keep those good thoughts in mind next year as we visited earlier in the year to assist everybody to keep in mind what we're setting as far as goals, governance, vision, and values. Thank you very much to everybody who worked on this. How are we doing on needing a break?
Good.
We're good. We'll go straight into staff reports. Gary, sir?
Just wanted to mention that we did receive the preliminary audit for 2024, and you'll see the presentation on June 2nd. We are moving forward with the executive search. The brochure should be done very soon, and that should be out very, very quickly, I would guess, in probably the next week or so. The, as I mentioned on strategic goals, we've talked to staff, and we do have a calendar that we're trying to have certain milestones and try to complete certain portions of that. And if we can move faster than that, we will do that. This will be our first time through that. But I think it'll be helpful for the staff then to have worked through that at one point, and then the next time, it's going to be a lot easier. We'll learn how to be more efficient in that process. And then I just want to mention, there's a KDOT meeting coming up on Wednesday at 9:00. It's on improving mobility in Southwest Kansas, and I plan on attending that meeting. So that's major things.
All right, thank you. We'll hear from the county counselor.
I think we have two executive sessions that are on the agenda for today, and I think I'll defer comments over to those.
Very good. Madam Clerk, upcoming events, anything to add or change to those that are published?
No, sir.
We'll hold commissioner reports until after the executive session. We're going to have one session followed by a second session, correct, because we have dual purpose?
Correct.
All right. So which one do you want to take up first with personnel?
Whichever order.
All right, let's take up personnel. Is there a need for an executive session to discuss non-elected personnel?
There is.
And who do you want present at the executive session?
We'll need the interim county administrator, the county counselor, and the board.
Do you want any other individuals present?
Not for that one. And we'll need 20 minutes for that.
20?
I do have reasons for that.
All right, very good. Motion to go into executive session for 20 minutes for non-elected personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Persons identified. Okay. Is there a second? There is a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. We're on executive session. We'll be back in 20 minutes. We'll be back in 20 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second to go back into general session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'll confirm that no action was taken. Madam Counselor, is there a reason for additional executive session?
There is.
And the purpose?
This one is for consultation with an attorney.
For attorney-client privilege?
Yes.
Motion and who else should be present?
We'll need the interim county administrator, the county appraiser, county counselor, and the board, and we'll need 20 minutes for that one.
Very good. Is there a motion to go into executive session with the persons identified by the counselor for a period of 20 minutes on the basis of attorney-client privilege?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll be back in 20 minutes. The regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Moving in second to go into regular session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're back in regular session. No action was taken. Appreciate the employees' participation with the county counselor in getting some legal advice. All right, Commissioner reports right to left. Seniority, sir.
The only thing that I had was the construction meeting with Hutton on the EMS building, and everything looked good. That's the first meeting we've had on-site. The next meeting is scheduled for the 3rd of June, and I will be out of town, so the maintenance people Garden City, Holcomb, and Fannie County. You can see that on the planning commission agenda, which is posted on their website. So I don't know if you're aware of that, but just if you're ever interested, I thought it was kind of an interesting report. I always got those when I was on the planning commission, but those are available online. I attended my stakeholder meeting with Lissa from SGR regarding our executive search, and I think that's moving forward pretty quickly, so I'm glad to see that. I attended the student presentations regarding social issues at Garden City Community College. That was really an interesting event. I'm glad I got to do that. I was at the Builders Association luncheon. I attended the Northwest Industrial District meeting that we had last week, and I think that's all I have to report.
Okay. Commissioner.
I attended the same student presentations that Commissioner Gorman did. We were just supposed to listen to their presentations, and then when it was over, we went to the next one, but unfortunately, I had to...
No.
Just some educational opinions. So I don't know if I kind of shot down a few of their ideas, but it's more of kind of a debate deal. And then last week, I attended a fair board meeting, so that's all I have.
Mr. Oates?
No reports, other than I plan on getting with Gary after today's meeting to look at where we're at with all the working tools for our LET renovation in jail.
Look forward to your report on June 2nd. All right, I was interviewed also by SGR with regard to our executive search. I think the parameters were pretty clear, as expressed by this commission's work at last week's session. Compass received another wonderful piece of news, good things happening there, and sewer district number four is not on the map. We did have a meeting, but as noted by Dr. Hannigan, he was not at that meeting, nor were the two new landowners in the district, and I think the county administrator will make sure that gets cleaned up for future reference. The interesting thing that I didn't report to the board about the county commissioners' association meeting in Manhattan, which Vice Chair Gorman and I attended, was an opportunity to reach out and see some what other counties are doing across the state with regard to wind generation facilities and how they are taxed, and ideas in the event that any of our wind farms in Fannie County come to fruition. We have a regular work session scheduled following today's session, and does anybody have any other business before the commission? If not, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn without discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.